The meeting comes to order. Time is now six thirty-one. And welcome to Neighborhood Board fourteen. I want to ask for a roll call for quorum.
Ron Higa.
Yep.
Kirill Kaapu.
Present.
Zoidel Magway.
Yeah.
Brandon Mitsuda.
Present.
Chance Naota.
Here.
Henry Pang. Kori Yamamoto. Dale White. And Sheriff Huang.
Present.
We have six?
Because we have six and we need seven, as for the record as of the present, we do not have quorum and therefore we really cannot transact any business, in other words, make a motion, et cetera. So whatever needs to be done by motion has to wait until either somebody another person shows up on our board or we have to wait until next meeting. My understanding is, the good news.
My life.
We will, we will be meeting at MyMySchool.
Woo!
Meeting.
Woo-hoo!
Alright. And we thank the Neighborhood Committee Office for doing that. So, again, don't come here next month, go to MyMy. Okay. Let's start off, first of all, I want to say, please turn off your cell phones if you have any, and also if you have to be recognized, especially those on WebEx, please raise your hands so I can see, well, at least my neighbor and assistant can see you so we can recognize you. And I want to recognize and welcome our newest member to our Neighborhood Board, Zoidel Magway. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes.
And he was for information, he does work for the Neighborhood. So, very good. We got the end, if you see. Okay, with that, let's have some reports. Hello, Fire Department, are you here? Captain Robert?
Here, present.
Okay, all yours.
Hey, good evening, everybody, I'm Captain Carvalho.
You're gonna have to speak up and don't cover your
Oh.
camera. There we go.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Dog, can we louder?
Where's the microphone?
I think it's us.
Maybe it's us. Hold on.
Okay.
No, no audio back there.
Spencer said, yeah, alright. I have it turned up all the way.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit ago it was quiet too, I'm not sure if it just pulled down or, I don't know. We can hear you, it's just a little bit quiet.
The microphone is, what about now?
You feel better, get it closer.
You can't see me.
I'll be sitting on your lap if I get any closer.
Go ahead, do the best you can.
Okay, good evening, Captain Carvalho from the Honolulu Fire Department, Engine Four, Kukini Fire Station. These are the statistics for last month, July. Fires, structure fires, we had zero. Wildland or brush fires, we had one. Nuisance fires, which fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle, we had one. Cooking fires, zero. Activated alarms with no fire, one. Emergency, medical emergencies, we had a hundred and six. No motor vehicle collisions involving pedestrians. We had five motor vehicle collisions. No mountain rescues, no ocean rescues, no hazardous materials incidents. Okay, the fire safety tip for the month is fire and fall prevention. Okay, help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing fire prevention and proper practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fire and falls. Learn more at fire dot Honolulu dot gov forward slash fire and life safety forward slash Kuna forward slash. Okay, stay in the kitchen when you are frying and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide a lid over it and turn off the burner. Remember, the stove top and the oven are not to be used for storage. Okay, next, ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and strobe alarms are available regarding visually impaired objects. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. When the alarm sounds, get out and stay outside. Call nine-one-one from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you are unable to evacuate, shelter in place. Stay near a window and call nine-one-one. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keep walking areas, pathways, and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. Review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directive, and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. Okay, and that is it for the safety tips of the month. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? If not, Captain, thank you very much.
No, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Next, Honolulu Police Department. Hope we can hear you better. HPD?
Can you hear me?
Are you gonna speak louder or, I don't know what it is?
Yeah, it gotta be your guys' mic because I could hear the captain pretty good. Not sure.
Wait, is it us?
It's us.
It's us.
Okay.
Wait, wait, one second.
Okay.
I can, I can go down and get a different cord to connect directly to the computer or the TV, but why don't we have HPD go and buy that?
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll do the best we can.
Thank you. Lieutenant Kyoni Hong.
I'm gonna let you give your report, Lieutenant. We're gonna try and get another cord because we're having a hard times hearing all of our our government officials. But so you, you have to talk really loud.
Okay.
Like you're talking to your wife.
Okay. I might pop the camera and put it by my mouth like I'm talking on a phone call.
Well, I, we.
Hi, this is Lieutenant Kyoni Hong, representing District Five.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
Alright. Regarding the statistics for July twenty twenty-three, burglaries, we had six compared to five. Motor vehicle thefts, there were twenty-two compared to six. Little bit of an increase, but a bunch of them were mopeds that we looked up. Thefts were sixteen compared to fifteen, and car break-ins were eleven compared to five. The total calls for service were one thousand three hundred and eleven compared to one thousand two hundred eighty-four in June. I don't, I was looking at the previous meeting I didn't attend, but I don't think there were any follow-ups that we had to do. So if there are any new questions for this week, let me know and I'm available to answer.
Oh. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? If not, Lieutenant, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Iris, maybe we can do better, let's.
Hi, good evening. I don't have a video to shut off though, is it loud?
Yeah, you gotta either talk louder or I don't know what. We're trying to get the new cable, so do the best you can, screaming.
Okay, sorry for you on the web that can hear me loudly. Um, for Board of Water. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's, okay. So just reporting, in July, there were three main breaks in Neighborhood Board fourteen. The first was on the third of July, near six four six Wiley Street. The second was on July nineteenth, near nineteen thirty-two Kalakai Kalakai Street. And the third one was on the twenty-fifth of July, near ten twenty-five Malua Drive. So, I just do the main break report and the general announcement. Sorry, I need to swipe to it, okay. This general announcement, we just want to say disaster preparedness. It's summertime, which means it's officially hurricane season through November thirtieth. Being prepared and having an emergency kit available for your household is essential. Residents should store at least one gallon of water per day, per person, per day, for at least fourteen days. So, and so don't forget about your pets also. And during an emergency, stay tuned to media reports and subscribe to the city's hnl.info. That's a, this is a great way to receive information, bulletins by the Board of Water Supply and other emergency agencies. So go to our boardofwatersupply.com website to learn more about disaster preparedness. And that's all.
That's all.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? If not, Iris, thank you very much.
Thank you, see you at MyMy.
And by the, by the way, are you gonna join us at MyMy next month?
Yeah. I'm hoping to, there we go.
She's hoping to.
Oh, good, I'd like to see your smiling face.
Thanks.
In person. Thanks, Iris. Alright, item number three, filling of vacancies, since we do not have a quorum, unfortunately, we cannot act upon that issue. Item number four, election of officers, saying no quorum. We're missing a treasurer, so we'll hold that is, item up for the next meeting. Any resident concerns?
I have one.
Yes, Donald.
Crosswalk that Jan brought up on, was that, North School Street and Kokoa?
What street are those?
Kokoa and North School Street.
North School Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
The question I have is that, when will the city mark that crosswalk? I mean, right now it's two months, right? You're going into the second month. And that crosswalk has been elaborated out for about a year. So I wanna know, I want a commitment from the city to tell me when they're gonna do it. And I also want to know the district of transportation, what is our sector? In other words, what zone or what, whatever they delegate that we're in, I would like to know. And that's supposed to be either the councilman or the city official.
So Donald, will we work with Mayor's office as well as Council Number Ten's office to get you that, those answers?
Yeah, because the question is that, you know, I'm reading it and Jan brought it up the last month and it's still not marked. I mean, how long do we have to wait before the councilman takes care of our district?
I think, may I comment on that? I brought it up a year ago too, before. And if I can recall correctly, either DTS or DOT, one of those organizations, said that it was no longer gonna be used as a crosswalk, but I brought it up the reason, I forget the reason why. But I, the reason I brought it up is there's still a crosswalk sign, you know, person crossing sign there, so I figured it's gonna be a crosswalk.
It's not only that, it's marked on the road that is a crosswalk, okay?
It is, but it's really.
All that effort was made to identify the crosswalk. And you tell me right now that you're not gonna re-mark that crosswalk?
Well, that, that's why I asked the question again, is it, are there any markers? That's why I asked it again.
I would like our, our councilperson to get that and tell us why.
There could be an update from Mayor's office too as well. Because they, the Mayor's rep told me that he was sick tonight, but then there's a report coming from.
Okay, we'll put it, I'll put it on the agenda for the next month. By that time, we'll, we'll have it, this issue resolved. So my understanding is the crosswalk of Kokoa and North School Street, I'll put that down. And the representative from Council Number Ten's office will take care of that.
Okay, and there's another one that Karen brought up about the restriping. Well, if you go back and look at from Nuono to Lilia Street, there's no striping.
Are you?
That's, that's, he's talking about a different one than mine. I was talking on Hossdale and he's talking about Nuono and the.
Okay, what's, what's the location, Donald?
Nuono Street.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Nuono Street and?
On, on, we're talking about School Street, right? Nuono Street to Lilia Street.
And what about?
There's, there's no, well, there's supposed to be a striping, but there's no striping. And then, I noticed they made a striping from Lilia Street to Kalih Street in yellow.
When you say no striping, what does that mean?
Lines in the middle dividing.
They're dividing the road between the lanes. There's a, there's a stripe between.
Okay, here's Nuono going down.
School Street?
And here's School Street.
Okay, you're on School Street?
Yeah.
Heading towards.
Lilia Street.
There's no light, there's no lanes on the road, nothing painted on the road.
Why I'm here?
Nuono to Lilia. So it's actually Nuono down to New School, then to.
No, no, just, just, just School Street between.
All between, alright, I got you, okay. Got it, I'll put it down. Is there, is, where's that sitting?
So I'll, I'll make sure to also.
Alright, alright, we'll, we'll, we'll leave that to.
I'll, I'll, I'll also, I'll also put it on these ones too, so both of us can follow up.
Yeah. Get together with Ed, so there will be. Thank you, I'll put it on the agenda, thank you. Anything else, anybody have, why have concerns, resident concerns? Alright, thank you very much, moving right along. Hopefully this works now. Is that one of our members?
Ready, ready, ready.
Henry? Is he?
Cora!
Cora's here.
That email confused me, I.
Oh, geez.
Yes. And I went, oh no.
Oh, it's Cora, I thought it was.
Join us, Cora. I went to MyMy. I went to MyMy, I figured.
You went to.
I figured there were people at MyMy, but nobody else was there. Oh, okay.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you made it, still here.
That's not a quorum problem. You are quorum. Now we can go. I went as far as I could, as I could.
Before we begin or continue, let's make sure our audio is working.
Would you like to take a brief recess?
Sure. Let me just say, any objections to taking a five-minute recess?
No, no.
Alright, since there are no.
So we don't know if they, they say something?
Alright.
Somebody say something. Iris? Captain Robert? Senator Keen?
Alright, let's, let's resume the meeting and then let's see if it works, now we'll take another recess.
Oh, I'm here, sorry. Can you hear me now? I wa, I walked away, sorry. How is that?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Loud and clear, yes.
Okay, that's.
Is that better, loud and clear, testing, one, two, three?
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you. Any serial objections? Pull the meeting back to order. We're gonna go back to item number three, filling of vacancies. We have a vacancy in Subdistrict one, four, five, and two in Subdistrict three. Is there anyone who would like to fill those, make, any one of those vacancies? Good. And your name, sir?
Donald Nita.
Alright, Mr. Nita, any other individuals who like to fill one of the vacancies? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to elect Donald Nita as the representative from Subdistrict three.
Chair, so who, that Donald Nita would be the representative from Subdistrict three?
Zero second.
I second the nomination.
Before I ask for a roll, a roll call vote, I'd like to ask Mr. Nita, Mr. Nita.
Yes.
Would you come and tell us, why do you want to come back and to join us after how many years now?
It's only two. Well, the reason I came back is that I noticed in the neighborhood report that our district has not been so-called represented. You know, I say all these things about, oh, about road markings, crosswalk, and there's no definition. You know, we've, we've been in waiting for maybe a year. And to me, this is unsaid. We have to put the so-called mayor or the city council action to get it done. And I don't wanna say, oh, when, no, I wanna date. And that's one of the reasons I'm here, and the other reason is that neighbors were asking when I would be coming back to represent them. And at first, my reason for not so-called participating in Neighborhood Board, I wanted the younger people to get involved. And I've noticed that the younger people are not stepping up. So I guess us older people gotta step up to the plate. And that's one of the other reasons why I'm, I'm asking to be on.
Any questions of Mr. Nita? And by the way, I will not ask you what he considers young and old.
Well, well, you know what I mean.
Yes. And for those of you who may not know, Mr. Nita has been on the board even before I was on the board, that's how long he's been on. Now I'll call for the question roll, roll call.
Thanks.
And if you are in favor of Mr. Nita, just.
Say his name.
Say, state his name.
Ron Higa?
Yes.
State his name.
Donald.
You gotta say Donald.
Donald Nita.
Say Donald Nita, Don, Donald.
Okay.
Donald, Kirill Kaapu.
Donald Nita.
Zoidel Magway.
Donald Nita.
Brandon Mitsuda.
Donald Nita.
Chance Naota.
Donald Nita.
Henry Pang, are you online? Kori Yamamoto.
Donald Nita.
And Dale White, I don't see online. Congratulations, oh, Sheriff Huang?
Donald Nita.
Congratulations, Donald.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Sheriff votes Donald Nita.
Yep, I got you.
You got me, alright. Alright. Motion carried, congratulations. Thank you. Can you take your seat to the left over there? Okay, there we go. The next item on the agenda is this election of a treasurer. Do I have any nominations for treasurer? Don, 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 don over here, so you can see your smiling face.
Hi, come on.
You sit on that. Um, I was informed by Dale White that he'd be interested to to run for treasurer. So somebody can nominate him. He, Dale White.
Dale.
Would somebody like to nominate him?
He's gonna be here?
No, he's, he's on it, he's on it.
He has to be here to be.
Does he have to be here?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry Dale. Are there nominations for treasurer?
Question is lost, Henry?
Yes.
Oh, he hasn't spoken, oh.
I thought it was lost. Yeah, can the person named Lost identify himself? Because he's lost. Any, anybody would like to nominate someone for treasurer, or do you wanna wait until Dale comes back?
Wait, wait, wait.
Alright. If there are objections, we'll wait and we'll carry this issue out to the next agenda in September. Alright. Item number six, reports of members attended to other meetings, any? Okay, if not, um, po.
Um, CAC, we had our meeting on August second and there was an interesting report on transit rider survey, which is actually three different surveys that they've been doing between October twenty, twenty twenty-one and January twenty-two. And they interviewed about two thousand people and some of them, some of it was a marketing research study. One was an onboard study, they actually boarded the buses and interviewed people. And then there was another one where they was more like focus group type thing. And interesting results, a lot of it you would, you know, you would kind of figure, yep, that makes sense. People prefer faster service, better better customer service, better transit speed, better transfers, and more efficiency. On time, no clustering of buses. But interestingly enough, cost wasn't as much of a factor among the people. They considered time was more of a factor. If it takes, you know, more than half an hour, more than we drive, people say forget it. You know, and parking wasn't as much of a factor. It was more the convenience. They will be, you know, doing further explanations of study and have summaries and recommendations. That, that was the most interesting part, there's a commuter challenge, which is about halfway done through August, trying to get people to, instead of cars, do the intermodal transportation. It's called bikes, walking, the real style. And the people, yeah, they're, people get points, they have teams and nice prices, so.
Are you part of a team?
I am, no, because I don't commute. I am, no, because I don't commute. If you don't commute, you can't get many points. If you're just doing errands, it's hard.
Any questions? I have a question, what does the city plan to do? I guess it was a little disappointing when it was free at the beginning. It was like, what, I forgot, eight thousand something?
Yeah.
And then when the next day, when you had to pay, it was only about a thousand or two thousand. What's, what does the city plan to do? I mean?
Well, they, they, they just fitted that, you know, you have people in the beginning, just like me, I wanted to see what looked like.
Yeah.
Um, but it doesn't, you know, it, it's a shorter segment, it doesn't come all the way to Mill Street, it doesn't go to the airport yet. Um, so you're gonna, it's gonna build gradually, kind of, they.
So they anticipated?
Yeah.
Alright. Any other questions from the board? Out of curiosity, how many of on the board have ridden the rail? One, two, three, four, five? Any comments from you who have ridden?
Beautiful. Beautiful, yeah, not as smooth as, some of my friends got motion sick.
Yeah, you know, the one thing that we caution is anyone who gets motion sickness or seniors, if they're riding it, just to make sure that they're seated, um, not standing. And if you're standing, you gotta hold on to something, and then it's important that you're a little forward. Try to be as close to the front as possible if you are motion sickness. Because the, because the, because rail is going at fifty miles an hour, and it's pretty quick, and there's a lot of like
Yeah, yeah.
it also curves, so it's, it's not like a straightaway, so that's just the line.
A lot of people aren't, uh, used to riding trains, so if you're used to, you know,
Right.
it's, it's a lot smoother than a lot.
Yeah, it's much different from a bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Much different. Any other comments or?
I thought, I thought the rail was. Obviously, for what we expected, I, I would say it was an excellent ride.
Yeah.
We saw, we saw things that we would have seen on rail. And the things that I'm waiting for it to come to, um, the city transfer. I've got a couple more years. But, um, I think it's worth it.
There you go.
Nope, you're right.
Any other, any other? No? No? Well, it's good to hear, that's good to hear.
Fifty dollars.
Waited that long, I waited that long, I waited since Fosse's administration. That's, I think that was nineteen seventy, oh my God, I'm that old. But I'm glad that, as I said before, it's working before I die. That's, that's. Now, I asked the mayor at one of the town meetings, when will it get to the University of White, because I teach there, I mean, that's to me, the, you know, the all the way from Kapole, because I have students from Kapole going up to, uh, you know, university, but I guess that may not be in my lifetime.
Lost, has this happened?
Any, uh, any comments from the public? Uh, Lost, you have a. You, can you identify yourself, Lost? I mean, hello?
Check the quality control.
I'm sorry.
Check the quality control of the rail system. You can see the reason why you have irregularities on the, of the motion. You stay at the front of the, of one of the, I want to say, the beginning of the, the train, and you, you can see curvature there. The quality control, the strength, they're not going down to that. You make it, the upper plane, you can see the strength, that way you're in trouble. They're sitting, I air, the one of the stations, they're on the station.
We can't, we can't. Coming in and out.
We're having a difficult time hearing you, can you? I don't know, what should he do, Spencer? Nothing, that's all.
I'm not sure.
What is on the staff?
Um, what's your name? Yeah, I'll ask your name, what is your name?
It's Henry.
Yes, Henry, yeah.
Oh, it is Henry. Hi, Henry.
Henry, are you lost?
I'll call you.
Alright, alright.
How's this, can you hear me better now?
Alright, go ahead, Henry, what do you have to say?
Okay, if you check the quality control of that system, or get the tracks, you can see curvatures from I air, I'm sorry, pro-city direction, heading to Halava Station. Okay, you have, what do you expect when you're traveling fifty miles an hour, you're going left, right, left, right? That was the concern, the quality control guys messed up there. If you look at the ever planes, okay, I mean, from the crock center out, you can see they're even, straight and level. Those things could have been avoided from the beginning, but because somebody got paid off on this thing, that's why we end up getting a short end of the stick on this.
Okay.
Write it again and try and notice how uneven the tracks are. Common sense, common sense tells you, if you go fifty miles an hour and you just move your wheel left, right, you can feel motion. You don't feel that in a Japanese, um, bullet train, you don't feel that on the mainland trams out of Bart on San Francisco, only in Hawaii.
Special.
Okay, and of great.
Thank you, Henry, hope to see you in my, my next, next month. Any other comments?
I gotta finish dropping off and I'll be back down there in a little while.
Okay. Any other comments from the board or the public? Yes, Senator Kim?
I just wanted to emphasize that because it's steel on steel, which is a concern, we had what we considered rail back in the nineteen nineties, when the feds was gonna cover ninety percent of it, and it won the city council. But as it gets older, it's, the ride's gonna be rougher and rougher, because steel on steel, there's gonna be a lot of maintenance and a lot of going on. I've got to keep that in mind.
Yep.
So you were there, I was at corp council, you gave math trick on, I left, I think.
No, I was on there from eighty-five, when were you there?
I, I left eighty-five for the attorney general's office, but I remember it was just one vote.
Yep, we mentioned, we didn't know at the last minute.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mention any names. Well, at least it's, it's built, hopefully, well, anyway. We got it, thank goodness. Thank you.
We got part of it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or the public? None? Let's move on. Uh, anything else, Cora? Are you okay?
I'm all.
Alright. Uh, Mayor's Representative Edward is not here, you said, alright, um.
I can provide a few responses if you'd like.
Yes.
We have a few.
Sure.
Follow-ups. Okay, so the lane restriping on Hoftailing, off from the freeway to, to Hillcrest. Uh, DFM started restriping the faded pavement part markings along School Street, and Willinklud restriping of, of the faded pavement markings on Hoftailing Street from the freeway to Hillcrest. Work is expected to be completed by the end of October.
Should I keep that on the agenda? Who, who brought that up? You did, should I bring it up, leave it on the agenda? Okay, go ahead, next.
And, uh, pedestrian crosswalk at North School and Kokeas Street. DFM has started restriping pavement markings along School Street. Work is expected to be completed at the end of October.
Might have put that there on the agenda for the next month, anything else?
Uh, that's it.
That's it? And October issue?
Yeah.
See, they responded to your complaint. Oh, you have a iron here, right? Alright, moving right along, um, Councilmember Tam.
Hey, I'll give the report tonight, uh, thank you very much for, for, um, having another meeting, we're excited to move back to my, uh, we just wanted to give you some follow-ups from our community. So regarding, uh, the monster homes at two zero three seven, the industry and one one sixteen Holiday Drive. We have Jero, who's the deputy director of planning and permitting, and he'll be here to provide us updates on that. So, as far as our neighborhood security watch, this council member has started many of them, as well as has, is continuing to foster their growth, as well as reporting, uh, and following up on issues for them, so we have a neighborhood security watch on School Street, and we brighten all the lights on School Street, so as you drive down there, you'll notice that it's brighter. The reason why we did that was because of the criminal activity that was happening on School Street, and the police requested that the lights be brighter, so that they could see into those darker areas and prevent the congregating of, of youth at night. Uh, if you, if you drove down before, it was rather dark. And, but now, as you drive down, there are a lot less people congregating in those darker corners, and so it is, it is brighter now on the industry, yeah, I mean, on, uh, School Street.
What, what section of?
So, so the section we focused in on was, uh, by rainbow drive-in, all the way down to the twenty-first mark.
You're all right.
Yeah.
All the way down to the twenty-first mark. And then, and then also too, you know, heading down towards La Niela,
Well, how come?
Um, 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 you know, a, a, a Monteverva Senior Center, because there's so many seniors crossing those streets, so
Yeah.
if you drive down that road, went all the way down, now it's a lot brighter.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Yep. And then also too, we, we requested for that neighborhood board, uh, for the neighborhood security watch to request and monitor uh, speeding, um, on the industry and New Uwano Avenue, because there's, there's been a lot of speeding there. We've also asked to increase the light brightness on New Uwano Avenue, which, which has helped. Uh, for the Bay's Neighborhood Security Watch, we've been working with Representative Genata Kenuji on a lot of the homeless efforts there underneath the bridge by Texaco. Those efforts have been working out well, because there's a lot less homeless people now that are coming into residential from that, uh, service station area. And then also two signs will be put up soon, that say no trespassing, um, under that bridge area, statements, yeah. Uh, we're also, um, helping the Nama Uu Neighborhood Security Watch, and that's up by Mye Mye Elementary, you know, close up in Poonui. They've been requesting to repair bent, uh, and leaning no parking anytime signs, and we've helped them with that. Uh, the DFM Roads Division, um, has, has assigned a request number four, and they should be completing it soon. We've also requested a no parking from here to Corner Side on the Makai side of Bahili and Nama Uu. Uh, it's been referred to the Department of Transportation Services. We also requested a no parking sign in front of two five eighty Nama Uu Street. And the reason why we did that is because cars are parking there, and people are having a very difficult time negotiating that right and left and in that area. Um, also wanted to report to you that, uh, we're having a community meeting at, uh, Kohio Park Terrace, uh, with, with the residents. Uh, Senator Donna Mercado Kim will be there, and Representative Sunny Ganadan will also be there. The meeting will be on August the thirty-first, from six to seven PM, check-in starts at five thirty. We'll be talking about residents' concerns at that time. Uh, coming down, um, it's gonna be at the Kohio Park Terrace, um, Community Hall. And it's at one four seven five Lena Pooni Street. Probably the.
It's, yeah, between A and B.
Right.
Uh, yeah, that's that, um, they call it where Pat is.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, emphasizing the monster home issue, council member has introduced Bill forty-four, and it's entitled Making False Statements to City Officials. And so he wants to stop those false statements being made to city officials, because individuals are lying. When deputy directors, inspectors go, they say, oh, no, nothing's wrong, our plans are exactly the same, we don't have a lot of people in here. But that bill, right now in its current form, would say, if somebody is found guilty of violating this Bill fifty-four, then it would be a misdemeanor, subject to one of the following. A fine, uh, not to exceed two thousand dollars, imprisonment not to exceed one year, and community service not to exceed eighty hours. Now, the bill is currently in its second reading, and so there will be time to massage it and maybe possibly increase the penalties or add more things, but, you know, the council member is finding that there's a pattern, where every single time we try to get the monster home, right? Uh, Councilor Ukonaga had the same issue when she was a council member. They would just outright lie. So, council member Dos Santos Town wants to put teeth in there and give the departments some, um, enforcement power, as well as consequences to these actions, so these people stop lying to our inspectors. Um, if, if you go on down, uh, we fixed the new, um, we fixed the speed monitor solar sign on New Uwano Avenue, and I can tell you that just the other day I walked with the Bay's Neighborhood Security Watch, and somebody was flying down at about seven thirty at night at thirty-eight miles an hour, down New Uwano. But as soon as they saw me take the picture, they slowed down, they thought I was like some kind of, you know, law enforcement monitoring. And so it was a Highlander, they were going really fast. Okay, and then, uh, we also wanted to let you know that we put in the budget the two million dollars worth of sidewalk repairs, as well as pedestrian defense and crosswalks. Uh, the areas are crosswalks on North School Street, a crosswalk, uh, fronting Lila, L and L, uh, the installation of sidewalks along Judd and North School Street, so we want to let you know about that. Great. And then the last thing we wanted to tell you about is we want to tell you that we have a cleanup at Kabulubella Community Park, happening on Saturday, September the sixteenth. And more details will come out on that, but, you know, you should just meet us at the park. Um, I believe it's gonna start at, at nine, and it'll go probably till, till twelve. And we're gonna clean and beautify that park. The park has gotten better, you know, the police have helped us go in and, you know, put up fencing, and, you know, our department has put up fencing by the school and various things, but it still needs to be cleaned. And we want the community to be very proud of that park, so that's why the council member is wanting to do a cleanup there. And we, we invite you all, because it's within our neighborhood board district.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
No.
First on the monster home and, um, I, of my, um, address, um, Terry, what is that roof?
An eye.
An eye, yes.
Oh, what happened to that, because, uh, there's someone, Mr. Mizu and Councilman Tam identified that, uh, there was a deal.
Right.
Whatever, and I, the last I heard was, there was stop work.
Correct.
But I see people pulling off the walls, pulling out the roof, I mean, what's going on?
That is not good, well, because there's a stop work order, perhaps the deputy director can follow up and give you, and, and, you know, but it's not good, because a stop work order was issued, they're not supposed to be working.
I know that.
Thank you for the, thank you for the update on that.
And the crosswalk on, um, Lila Street, what you were talking about, L and L?
Yes.
There used to be one.
Right, there used to be one.
And the city, so, so.
I know.
Delia, then, now, now, what's this again, gonna bring this back, I mean?
Yeah, the, the community in that area, as we, as we went through the area, is, is asking for it, because what's happening is, is that they all have to go to Lila, uh, to, to go, you know, you all have to go down to School Street, right? So, we, so we put in money for that, so we want the departments to put that crosswalk back.
Yeah, because, um.
There's so many seniors there at the medical building that across the street.
No, I see a lot of people jaywalking.
I know.
Yeah, that was my concern.
Right.
Okay, we have a, the, uh, agenda, we'll find out about, got the progress for next month, thank you. Um, you want to wait in regards to the, the Nice Street, whatever street it was, I don't remember, that was, uh, monster home?
Um, you, you want to give your update now?
You want to give an update on that one, no?
Sure.
Since it's hot on the press, as they say.
Thank you.
If you want, so you don't have to come back.
Thank you.
Maybe you can cover the, uh, eleven sixty-two Holiday Drive, any objections?
Nope.
Um, or our, our fellow, um, legislators and government officials, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm taking out a order, I'm having the, the deputy director of, uh, I'm, I'm taking out a order. I'm having the Deputy Director of uh DPP testify in regards to eleven sixty-two Holla Drive and two zero three seven Liliha Street, in addition to.
Not what's it?
Hanai Loop. Hanai Loops, do it all at one time. Any objections? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jero Sumada, Department of Planning and Permitting for the city. So the eleven sixty-two Hanai, uh Holla Drive, that is a permitted structure, a monster home that was permitted back in twenty seventeen. Uh, complaint is about the use as a boarding house. So, uh, we're still, we already met with Corporation Council once, and are to get organized and collecting statements from the uh community members. Uh, and we have somewhat of a posse, so to speak, of uh interested board members and um community members. So we're still in that process of collecting statements. So, and from what uh board member up said that maybe activity has slowed down somewhat as far as the.
In's and outs.
Yeah, the in's and outs of the, that single-family home. Uh, okay, now, twenty seven, twenty thirty-seven Liliha, that property has actually two building permits. One is for a three-story uh dwelling. That permit, based on the activity that we inspected, uh, the permit has been revoked. Uh, however, the permit is still open, because they are appealing through the Building Board of Appeals. Uh, that appeal process has to be scheduled, and um they get to present their side of their case, challenge the action of the director, uh, and until that comes to a conclusion, their permit is still open. Uh, the sec.
Question for you, though. Why was it revoked?
Uh, I don't have that, that particular details. But the second permit is an Ohana unit permit. That one is still active. It was inspected and uh violation was issued. That violation was for work without approved plans. It has not been corrected, so it is in the notice of order, which is collecting fines. Uh, they, the owners also appealed that violation, so that has to go to the Building Board of Appeals too. So um. That's the status of twenty thirty-seven.
How long will it take for the building?
Uh, they're kinda into the next year already, twenty twenty-four, as far as um the Building Board of Appeals, because of so many.
Yeah, yeah. I noticed that within the last, like, two or three weeks, no work is being done. There's no, like, vehicles there or, I think it's empty.
Well, we, uh, it just so happens, uh, I have a friend that is at uh St. Francis, and, and on two occasions, I went to visit, and I actually did see activity.
Oh, you did, okay.
It was on a Sunday.
Okay.
So I just, you know, on the way back, I took a picture, and then I.
Great.
Refer it to our staff, and they sent, they went out to do inspections.
Let's go on to uh Donald's.
So.
Hanai. What's the name?
What, what, which, what's the street address?
That's uh, the address is.
Hanai, H A N A I.
Hanai Loop.
I see.
That's the one that I found.
Yeah, great.
Ten, uh, twelve.
It's twenty two.
It's.
I thought it, I thought we took care of that one.
The, the stop work order was, was, was issued, was issued, but then they're saying not, there is work that's being.
Thirty-two.
Fifteen thirty-two, okay.
Okay, I'll, I wanna ask, uh, if we can come back and tell us about that.
Can I make, can I make an update, Mr. Chair? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so um, just as a general update from the department regarding monster homes, since January of this year till now, we have revoked thirteen uh permits relating to monster homes. And we actually have one more that is kind of pending. So the director is taking very po- she actually is investigating these herself.
Wow.
Uh, because it's a, it's a significant um action that we're taking to revoke the permit, where some of these are actually under construction, and then now they have to stop, right? So, uh, and actually fifteen thirty-two Hanai Loop is one of them that was revoked. So many of the ones, because the action is severe, uh, they appeal through the Building Board of Appeals, which is their right to do that. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why the cases are getting backed up, and it's into scheduling for next year, as far as twenty twenty-four to be heard. Uh, in the meantime, stop work order probably is issued on all these permits that are revoked. So if Mr. um Nita has witnessed some construction activity recently, uh, I'll refer that to our staff to inspect.
My question is that, you know, when you revoked the permit?
Yes.
Does the inspector take a picture?
Yes.
To the item?
Yes.
But if that's the case, right, the inspector goes back and look at it again, and he sees what had been done. What's the process there?
Well, Chair, may I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
So the, the inspection is recorded as far as the, uh, at the time, the notice of violation is issued. Uh, they do periodically go back and check to make sure it's not continuing. So they probably have missed the activity that you uh observed. Uh, but thank you for the reporting it. We'll send it back to the uh inspectors, and they'll go send an inspector out uh in the near future, and they will compare pictures of the before and after of the second inspection. Uh, there is additional uh opportunities for violations to uh be invoked. Uh, when there are repeat offenses, the, the daily fine goes up significantly. And then it starts track, it still starts tracking, because they, they need to uh correct the violation. In the, in the case of a revocation, again, the permit is still open. Uh, the, the owner has the opportunity to withdraw the permit and then, like, totally, you know, stop that activity. But it's up to the owner, the property owner, that was cited for what they wanted to do. So it has to kind of, we have to give them due process that.
So if you have a stop order, they violate that order, which was issued by whom? The departments, which is an administrative order, doesn't have the teeth of a court. And they're gonna appeal, and they do go back and they do work, but you give them another stop order, then what?
Uh, no, yes, and we increase the fine, the daily fine. It, it varies based on the offense and the type of uh note of violation, uh, but it can become very significant, actually. You know, it might start out at fifty dollars a day, um, but we have some that are like two hundred fifty. Uh, it goes, it, and it keeps going up, escalating until they finally recognize that.
Well, so it's not over until, and this, this is an administrative appeal. What's the next step if you lose on administrative appeal? My understanding is you go to court. It's gonna drag on.
Yes.
So don't hold your breath, guys. I, we still work for the city. It ain't over until the court says no, and the appeal goes, there's no, there's no way to go further than appeal.
So, Chair, my question is, if they do the violation, okay, you said they, you know, they paid a fine, or they get fined. My question is, does the city request them to tear down what they put up?
They can't do that.
They can't request. Is that right?
Um, we, I, I'm not a legal expert. I cannot answer that.
Nevermind.
However, um, I, from what we've been discussing in relation to that bill that Brandon was talking about, the, the ability to actually tear down somebody's house that was built illegally is, is very unlikely.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying tear down. I'm saying that when the stop order was done, city just had the structure, but now they add the walls and all that. Does, he pays the fine, okay, but he still has his wall.
So.
Okay, so my question is then, does the city expect the building to tear down the wall? Because it was in violation of the stop work order?
Chair, may I answer that?
Here, here, please.
So um, a, a notice of violation is issued for a very specific uh thing that was wrong with what the contractor was doing. Uh, in addition to if they gave false information regarding, you know, how it was authorized and all that stuff. So if the corrective action is to remove part of the house, if it was too big, or remove, move a wall, or remove a bathroom, or the, whatever the criteria was the violation was based on, they have a chance to correct that. Yeah, so that it's basically up to them how they want to remedy the situation. So, however, they correct that.
I think his question, Donald, let me, let me refuse your question. Yes, we know we are violation, but to hell with you. We're not gonna do anything. So what, what happens now? They don't do anything. What's the penalty?
So what, what happens is the violation, however it is, eventually closed, uh, so it's because the daily fine is still tracking. Okay, so you, it, the fine could be three hundred thousand dollars that they have to pay. And if they don't pay it, then we lean the property, uh, and eventually, uh, we, we haven't done this too often, but we foreclose. If they have the inability to pay the fine, then we foreclose, and we have done it in the past. Uh, and then we recoup the money that way.
You haven't done anything in the past, it's rare, but, you know, like, not sure. You know, we get all these people who um put their comfort on for their so-called land and all that. Some of the residents can have maybe half a million dollars, and it's still going on. I mean, you know, so what you're saying is good, but it's part of their concern. The city doesn't really enforce it. Yeah, if, if they really enforce it, they would collect all the fines and say, okay, at this state, you pay all your fines, but they never happen. The fines go up, 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 same thing with the building. It goes up, 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 but the guy here has a roof. He's protecting his, um, building.
Donald, as long as they're getting fined and they appeal, there's not much the city can do.
That's right.
Until the court says, this is it, and the judge, the city has a judgment, they put a lien on it, and they go and foreclose, then that's what is gonna happen. It's gonna take time.
Well, I, I'll tell you something. I have never seen a monster home get booked.
Anyway, well, welcome to the monster home.
Uh, well, let me, uh, question, Chance, um, I was gonna ask. For, I'm not sure if this is the right word to put it, but for developers who have had continued violations, from continued fines, whether they've been foreclosed or not, does the city track them? And like, if, if, like, if they have continued violations and they keep stacking fines, are they able to develop on more properties? I mean, I'm just kind of curious about that. And then if there's, had never been any cases like this too, where they've developed on different properties, now there's one that's, like, contentious.
Chair, can I answer? Yeah, sure. So we're, we're trying, we're starting to track them as far as the, 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 not so much the developers, property owners, but more so the, the professional engineers and third-party review firms that are involved in that development. So that's how we are pursuing preventing repeat actions from coming up. Because that's the trend that we see, or the pattern.
I'm gonna interrupt you folks.
Kim, that's a little.
Well, yeah, uh, this came out of order, okay? And there were no objections, but we do have our state representatives waiting. So I wanna let them give their reports first, and I know that Melissa has a question. Melissa, you have a question on this?
Oh. I actually didn't, I mean, I just wanted to mahalo DPP, you know, for um the work that they've been doing to get the permits processed, because I know we had some challenges um getting some of the, we were stuck in one of the issues that they were having um end of last year, but it seems to have resolved itself. So we appreciate all the hard work that DPP has done. But I actually had a question for Brandon, and it has to do with Liliha Street. Um, because I was under the understanding, I know there's some different lights that have been going on for the Kupuna, you know, in the, like, the school street area. But my question has to do more with um on Liliha Street. It was my understanding, after having a conversation, I thought it was with Councilmember Tam, but I, now I'm not so sure on um whether or not there was gonna be speed humps placed on Liliha Street due to the speed.
Oh, God. So for Liliha Street, what we've been doing is we have been having a speed enforcement on that street, uh, speed monitoring by our police officers. And uh, there has been a suggestion to put speed humps by St. Francis Hospital, because I know that there's been a lot of speeding over there. But um, I know that that was our, that was our discussion on that. Speed humps going down in Liliha, past St. Francis, like, after Judd, I don't, I don't think that that's been talked about, because people are just uh traveling down there at, you know, twenty-five miles an hour, right? They're not really slowing down. But, but we can put that request in though, if, if you want it in.
Well, it's not so much that. I mean, I don't know what the likely, because, you know, the other thing is the bus, because the bus stops right in front of St. Francis, and so across the street from St. Francis and on the St. Francis side. And so that was a concern too, because the crosswalks are right there.
Right.
And you have to walk across one, and then walk across St. Francis in front to get to the bus stop opposite the street. And so that was just my concern on whether or not there was gonna be anything done. Um, as, again, I had heard that there may be some thought, or some thoughts about the speed humps. I just was inquiring if that was even on the table.
There's been talks to have the speed humps in front of St. Francis. I, I can tell you that residents and constituents have wanted that, and so we can put that request in again in, in front of St. Francis. Co- because it is a problem area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, if there are objections, do you have any more questions about monster homes than any of these three uh different addresses in DPP? I'm gonna ask to hold off until we have our state representatives give their report, and very patient.
She's trying to ask the question.
I'm sorry?
Senator Kim is trying to ask the question.
Oh, she wasn't. Senator Kim, did you have a question, or are you ready to give your report?
I had a question.
Oh, no, go ahead. I didn't see your hand raised.
Sorry. I just wanted to ask if it's true that even though that the fines are accumulating, and it gets up to a high number, that at some point in the negotiations, there, the violators get a lot less of what the fines are, whether it's through the courts, or whether it's through the appeal process, then the city just cuts the fines. Because, and the developers then know that, and so they don't pay attention to what the fines are. So.
Is that a, is that a statement? Senator, is that a statement or question?
Question of that, that evidence that who has actually paid the full amount of fines?
Um.
It's, it's, okay, you wanna answer that now?
Yeah, you'll answer that now. So Senator, before this administration, the common practice was to negotiate a lesser fine.
Right.
However, this administration is pursuing the approach of collecting hundred percent of the fine. Um, there are major properties with large amounts. I don't know how many we have actually collected that entire amount, but right now, the strategy is that we will not reduce the fines like previous administrations did.
Oh, that's good to hear. But I know the courts many times will reduce it too, so.
So, well, we'll let them do it, but as far as how we're pursuing it, we're going after the whole amount.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna move on, and then I'm gonna go back to the item of the uh monster homes, so that our state representatives can give their reports, don't they? They've been waiting very patiently. Uh, Senator Rhodes?
Hi, everyone. I'm Elijah Ebert, just uh reporting for Senator Rhodes here.
Okay.
For everybody. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. So there's just uh three items. The first is. Alright so there's just uh three items the first is that red light safety program. Uh he wants everyone to know that if you just type in Hawaii red light safety program on Google you can actually see a list of all of the places that those uh red light cameras have been set up. And how many citations they've issued since they went online it also says when they went online so I just put the link to that in the chat. And uh he wants everyone to be aware of the last week the Department of Health reported a thousand and eight new covid cases with a seven-day average of a hundred twenty-eight cases and five deaths. Covid nineteen remains a top ten cause of death in this country and has claimed the lives of many more than one point one a million Americans. I still strongly encourage you to get your shots and boosters and then Senator Rhodes also wants everybody to know that you can always call our office at five eight six six one three zero uh with questions or email him at sendroads@capital.hawaii.gov. And I'm putting that information in the chat as well. Alright that is all.
Any questions from the board? Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Okay the question I have is that before the police department when they give citation able to receive the so-called fines? Is that part of the I mean was the state responsible to cut that out and now it goes to the general fund?
So you're asking where the uh citations like the money that's collected from the citations go?
Right now it goes to the general fund my question is before it used to go to the police department. But someone I don't know if it was the state or state and county that changed the rule. And now it goes to the general fund I think we should put it back to the police department. Cause I think they'll be more proactive because all these things about the red light stop and all that you know before we never had that. Because they were getting so-called a ticket and that red light is only a citation it's not a moving violation and to me that's a moving violation but you pay the fine and that's it. If it's a moving violation you go to court you pay a twenty-five dollars and you go to court. And if you found guilty your insurance company gonna be very happy. Because to me this thing about just paying a fine that's why so many people are doing it they're still doing it. I I I go to the YMCA in one on the Poly Highway on Vineyard. There are people still running red lights. You know the question is it they're gonna pay the fine big deal okay the question is that eh? I think we should get the police department you know. And with them more proactive because before when I was growing up and I was a teenager we never used to do anything that way because we knew that the police department gonna slap us. With the you know with the ticket and all that but now it's so simple.
Don't hate to interrupt so you're asking him if is that we should have the fines go to the general fund or go back to the?
Go back to the police department right now it goes to the general fund.
Can you just ask the Senator about that issue and come back to us with the answer can it be done?
Absolutely I can do that.
If it can be done fine if why if it cannot be done it should not be done why not?
I can comment on that.
Okay yes Senator.
Okay so um you're right long time ago I don't know how long ago that it went to the city. And what they found was that every time the police needed to raise uh money that they would go and start ticketing everybody. And the whole thing was that they shouldn't um be able to be in control of where the money goes because it encourages them to make quotas and to collect money. And at that point and I don't know when it was but it's been for that decade that the money goes to the state. And so this and I know the cities has many times tried to get part of those those funding. Now the fact that they do get cited for running a red light prior to that even though if it goes back to the police there's just not enough police and not enough people out there to be able to catch people in the act of running a red light. So not only they not get a fine they don't get any ticket because you don't have a cop standing at the corner twenty-four-seven catching people red light so there's no law that we can have twenty-four-seven for famous speeding you know unless they get caught. And the I see so many violations I always wonder when is the police gonna be you know around but they're never around when the violations happen.
I have seen cars that sees violation and they don't go after them and I was for your information uh we were talking about the sixty-seventies okay at that time you didn't have people running red lights you didn't have people speeding. We young kids we still get this exhibition of speed we burn rubber. The cops right there and you know speeding cops right there and they don't have to have a calibrated gun. It's the determination of the police officer while he witnessed is the that's the determination.
Don't hate to interrupt you.
Yeah but that was a different time I mean things have changed you know.
Excuse me a second she answer your question about having the funds go to the state rather than? Thank you Senator Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay let's move on uh any other questions of Senator Rhodes rep? Okay uh thank you say hello to Senator Rhodes Senator Kim all yours.
Thank you uh I have submitted our community report I believe the chair has gotten it. And you know if you don't get the reports and I know because it's virtual and it's also in person but if people send my office an email that when we send that out to the chair we can also send you a copy of the report.
You you can do that it'd be very helpful because when I get it then I send it out and I got yours and Senator Rhodes you know like late in the afternoon then I send it to them and it's pretty tough for them honestly when they follow around their email.
Right well we tried to get it to you twenty-four hours before so we actually got it to you on Friday I think. My staff tried to get it early but we can send that out as well and I can also add your name. So if there's any kinds of updates on Red Hill stuff like that we can also send out information. My address in the chat box uh send kim@capital.hawaii.gov.
You wanna give us a briefing on items A and B in regards unfinished business? Uh I think it's called chicken and parrots and Red Hill.
Yes I will get to that um just also want to say that during this interim period we are gonna we are going to uh take action on four judicial appointments. And also let you know that I am in the office even though this is interim you can always find myself or myself in the office if you have issues or questions. As far as the DOT uh DOT plans to visit each neighborhood board meeting including a lever. And um they will be giving updates on the effectiveness of the red light camera project. And they had planned to be at this meeting however my understanding is because of what's happening on Maui uh they weren't able to but they are planning to visit every single neighborhood board. Let's see night work will begin on the Poly Highway resurfing project on August twentieth for me. And uh DOT has a hotline number if you have any questions regarding the projects you can call nine four five one 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 one. Um also wanted to thank everyone who donated goods to the Maui effort. Uh we had a huge uh donation drive this past week and we collected so much stuff. So thank you everyone now the problem is getting it over there still trying to fill up the big crates to get it over. Uh and if you wanna donate you can still donate Hawaii Community Foundation or Hawaii Food Bank the Salvation Army or First Hawaiian Bank. If you go on any of those links you can find where you can donate. As far as the Red Hill issue the new EPA Red Hill Groundwater Results Mapping App. You can view it in the new groundwater results application. EPA.gov slash Red Hill slash groundwater dash results application. I have put that address in in the chat for anyone who needs that. Also there is a summary of the community input from the twenty-seven Community Representation Initiative. The CRI meeting that the EPA has posted and I put that link in the chat for anyone who needs that information. And let's see the feral chickens we did pass concurrent resolution ninety-two. And I have been and my office have been prodding departments to get together to get this working group. So finally we have we will be meeting uh this week August seventeenth to discuss solutions to capture the feral chickens and roosters including free traps to the public also feral pigs. And uh we have reached out to the city because feral chickens and roosters are purview of the counties. Uh so that we have representative from the counties we've invited Representative Tam's office as well to be part of this working group. Part of it we need the funds the legislature put in five billion dollars my understanding is the governor vetoed that amount. But he said he would be putting in the money so we're hoping that we're gonna have the funds so that we can run this program. See. And that's it so is there anything else I missed?
Let's see. No right turn on school street leaky leaky is that a is that issue finished?
Oh it's getting worse.
No it's not and that's what the DOT was gonna come there to discuss and it will be coming to the neighborhood board.
Well I'll leave it on the agenda then for our. Thank you any questions from the board? Who what?
Henry.
Where's Henry? Henry what are you doing back there? Come on Henry we can sit over here.
My question is the Poly Highway is obstructing which is great. If there's a lot of joints nowadays that they the way they're paving things. It which is fine I mean I understand resources and timeframe that they have to work with. But can they spend more time at the joints because deviations at the joints you can feel that through your beard.
Did you get that question?
Like out there that they have to meet?
I'm sure there's standards they have to meet what they are I I don't know that answer and hopefully again. I'm sorry?
Are they being enforced standards?
Well they have to in order to qualify for any kind of uh funding from the federal government they have to meet all the requirements. So those are standards that have to be met now again I I can't test whether or not they're following it but they're supposed to be following and those are questions that should be brought up to DOT when they do before you. Now I feel that they spent way too much time on this project and it's been delayed and delayed and delayed and we're worried about it. So that's another thing we keep after DOT they keep moving the date of when it's gonna be completed it was supposed to be completed months ago and then they said in September now they're saying it's December so um it's very frustrating.
Yes it is. Okay um if they can at least follow up anyway on the standards that they're supposed to meet.
Yes I will have them I will have them that question to them and uh hopefully they'll be at the board meeting in the next one. And they can you know then you can ask them questions regarding that as well.
Yeah they're gonna be here so they can answer your question. Yes.
You know on that uh red light um you say that's uh leaky leaky and school?
Yes.
Well it's Pavi Street. And school there leaky leaky. It's both leaky and leaky leaky. On mine on the on the billboard says Kalish Street it does not say slash leaky leaky come on. Just let you know when you talk about location people size and it is.
All three jurisdictions now.
Okay guys that's okay we got it we got it.
Chair.
Yes.
So uh Senator I just got um from Department of Transportation. H three is gonna be closed completely both directions. These on the twenty-sixth leaky leaky is closed going Kanoniki bound every night this week and next week. Hawaii is gonna be closed sometime the week after can they be sure coordinate those so that all three are not closed at the same time or any two because when last time they closed um H three leaky leaky was jammed crazy jammed. And it was very very uh the neighborhood was overflowing in all directions you could not go anywhere. So just make sure that they coordinate when they're closing all three within a week of each other.
I'll be sure I'll be sure to make that notation.
Thank you.
Thank you any other questions from the board how about the public? If not Senator Kim thank you for your patience thanks for your. Uh let's see Representative Takunuchi. Senator I'm sorry Representative Takunuchi.
I'm Kelton I'm here on behalf of Representative Takunuchi.
Alright go ahead.
Um so uh yeah my boss just wanted me to share with you guys firstly that August um is Library Advocacy Month. Um in Hawaii um the Hawaii State Public Library System is encouraging everyone uh to stop by your local library um to check out a book um for uh this board it would be uh Baliha Public Library. She also wants me to let you guys know that they're starting a new pilot program uh called Hawaii Digital Navigators. Um this program helps to aid community members um navigate technology and teach practical skills so you can use the internet with confidence uh if you have a tech question please give their hotline a call. They are also providing in-person help um at five select uh libraries on Oahu. And I will post that information to the chat um for you guys to take advantage of. Um second um we have uh lawmakers listen uh coming up on August twenty-ninth at Koona Nicole Middle School in the cafeteria. Check-in starts at five thirty uh and it will uh start at six P M. Some of the representatives colleagues will be joining her to help answer questions about the issues you are most worried about. Uh fellow legislators Speaker of the House Scott Seike uh the majority leader Nakamura. Uh the Chair of the Housing Committee uh Rep Hashimoto uh and Chair of the Health and Homeless Committee uh Della Abalati. Um we hope to we hope you'll be able to join us there. Next uh she also wanted me to uh highlight uh in the Department of Land and Natural Resources Rapid Response Hotline. Uh for marine debris uh removal which is now available um including which includes uh abandoned fishing nets and fishing lines. Beachgoers are encouraged to immediately report hazardous nets and marine debris uh to the hotline or their websites. Um and I'll post that information in the chat as well. And then with regards to um some of the ongoing issues of Lilo Okulani Botanical Garden uh the homeless encampments uh we don't have updates on the sweeps but we have been in coordination with them. Um and we'll you know provide an update next month um if we receive one. And then also on the the rose ring uh parakeets and the feral chickens. Um no further we don't have any further updates on this topic other than the rep will be introducing new bills in twenty twenty-four to address um the funding that the Senator mentioned so. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Yes Chance.
Is there a number from the hotline on for a deal?
Yes. Yep I was gonna post it to the chat here right now let me go ahead and do that.
Yeah well it's hard for us to get a chat here why don't you just give it to us orally thank you.
Oh okay so it's uh eight three three four. Dunets, D A N E T S, and the actual number is eight, three, three, four, three, two, six, three, eight, seven.
One more time?
One more time?
Eight, three, three. Yep, eight, three, three, four, three, two. Six, three, eight, seven.
Got it? Okay, thank you. Uh, I just have one comment under item A under new business Wiley Street on ramp to Poly Highway dip, which is the same as item C, Wiley Street on ramp to Poly Highway eliminate bump, same thing. Uh, I don't know if the representative had anything to do with that because we had a representative from the governor's office and I mentioned in the last meeting and it has been corrected. So if you, it's a good representative had anything to do with it, tell her thank you very much. I don't know if our governor's rep will be here, but I wanted to thank him too. It's been corrected, there's no bump there, they eliminated that. So thank you very much. Any other questions, any comments for Representative Takunuchi? Okay, any from the public? If not, thank you, moving right along. Representative Mizuno's office? Representative, anyone for Representative Holt's office? Our governor's representative?
Aloha, this is Dallas Naveros.
All right, hey, you got my thank you already, yeah?
Yes, thank you so much.
No, thank you.
No, thanks for bringing it for my attention, I'm glad it was worked out.
You forgot it, right?
What's that?
Never mind, it was fixed, thank you. I remember mentioning it to you.
Yeah, you did.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, my pleasure. So just to give a quick recap, we all know that Gov is very busy, working nonstop with the Maui wildfires. He just had his latest update, which is available on his government Facebook page that aired at three o'clock. So he'll be doing more press conferences throughout this entire process. All the information as far as ongoing donations and site changes is available on the government website. Prior to that, we were really focused on the housing E P, we had different press conferences and Q and As that were ongoing that are now postponed. So until further notice, I will keep you all up to date on that. I do want to follow up on the gathering that is happening on August thirty first, K P T. H P H A will also be there as well, including myself, along with Executive Director Hakim Wan Safi to answer any questions and really bring some clarity to the house crisis. And to break away from a lot of tragedy that is happening right now, something beautiful did happen here in Hawaii, which was Queen Lili Okulani's World Standards returning to the state of Hawaii. There's amazing coverage on that date and what it means to the culture and to where we're at now. Probably brought a lot of closure, but also some new chapters and just rediscovering our history and bringing it back home. That's also available on the government's website and I'll be able to share this on the chat as well if you all can access it. That concludes Governor's Report, thank you all so much.
Thank you. You have any update on the, well, I guess the fire on Maui? Anything that we should know about? It was a real tragedy. And believe it or not, I first learned about it and I was telling some of the board members. I was in Kenya and Tanzania and I was in the United Club Room in, I think it was Nairobi. And all of a sudden I was watching TV and I says, geez, that place looks familiar. It was Maui. The government was on, so it was international. That's all devastating, I guess it was, over news worthings. Do you have any update on that?
It's a major tragedy for sure and, you know, of course, when it does happen here in the state of Hawaii, what I really love to see is a sense of community and action and for Ohana to really come together. I was also at the Capitol as well and it was unbelievable, the amount of donations that came in. And there's still a lot of A that needs to come up. But I would say the latest update that I have is the donation site. It used to be the War Memorial Stadium, but it's closing, the new donation site is open. Parking lot and now it's announced by, it's going to open at Sky Park. Queen Kahafu Mano Center from eight in the morning to four in the afternoon. And it's going to be a Friday. So that's the latest update and I've also got a lot of calls and messages regarding the FEMA doctor application process. If anyone would like to share in case we have any elderly has trouble accessing that application process, do let them know that they can also contact FEMA. That is eight, zero, zero, six, two, one, three, three, six, two. Eight, zero, zero, six, two, one, three, three, six, two. And that is the FEMA helpline, it can help anyone who goes that route. According to their website, the quickest way to apply for disaster is going to be through the website, the FEMA website, or by downloading the mobile app, which is available on Google and Apple. And it's about a twenty minute process. So they also have volunteers at the, at the shelter that can help anyone out or has any questions. And I know, I believe, there's going to be some Wi-Fi at the shelters as well. So they'll be able to do this application online in case they're having trouble with their phone. I know text is really just the way to go because still that failure spots are just coming up right. So the main focus is just recover and relief, there's still a lot to be done. I think only twenty-five percent covered as far as the dogs and the work that's happening there. All the damages, but again, there'll be press conferences on a daily basis. Today was at nine o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the afternoon. I know the governor, she had one at two o'clock, around two, two thirty. So they're, they're constantly keeping everyone updated as well as the Maui, the Maui Police Department, they've been great as well. Kind of know what's going on in Maui County dot, the great and latest needs too.
Did we ever find out, someone said they did find, what was the cause of the fire?
I'm determined yet.
Undetermined?
Yeah, it's still ongoing at this point.
Anyway, thank you, it's nice to see everybody coming together to help out. I mean, every one of my organizations is donating, so. But I don't know if that helps all those who have suffered, but it helps a little. Any questions, any?
Yes, Chance. If you can take this back to the governor's office, but I'm, at least to my understanding, we're getting funding from the federal government to aid in this crisis. I, I'm wondering if there's any assurance that that funding will be put towards the residents of Maui who have been affected and rebuilding their homes? If that's, if there's a reference to that or if that's something on the table, we're tracking.
Yeah, absolutely, I can definitely pass that to you. And you know, it might, I know that a lot of questions regarding FEMA and how the government is really gonna work with the residents up there. And it may have been answered in way through the last conferences these last few days. And they're available on Gov's Facebook page to really watch. I mean, there's nothing like hearing it from people who are there on ground zero. And I know there's a lot of misinformation on social media as well. So it's causing some confusion and getting a lot of people worked up sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board, about the public? If not, thank you very much. Um, Representative from K P T's office. Okay. Item number nine, presentations that has, it's gonna be postponed to the next month. I just got an email, I think I sent it to all of you folks. They'll be coming to tell us about a B W S increase. Uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth, two thousand twenty-three. I will so move by Brandon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zo, Zo, Zodell. Uh, any corrections first of all? None? Okay, all those in favor of the approving the minutes, raise your right hand. Nobody's up there, okay, fine. Any opposed? No objections, motion is carried. Going on to unfinished business. Item A, we took care of that, eradicated. And take care of it. We got a report on eradication of parrots and chickens. Red Hill update, we got a report. Lili Okulani Gardens, we got a report at eleven sixty-two Holla Drive update. At this time, I'm gonna, and also I'm gonna leave these on the agenda. Along with eleven sixty-two Holla Drive update. And since we have Geraldine, I, you know, I kind of cut them off because we wanted to have our state representatives to hear the report. Is there, are there any more questions or any more issues in regards to eleven sixty-two Holla Drive? Or item F twenty thirty-seven Liliha Street? Or fifteen thirty-two Hanai Loop? From the board? From the public? Okay, thank you very much. I got one question for, it's dawned on me. I know that Councilmember Tam introduced a bill saying that you give a false statement, you could be in violation, but what is it, a city violation?
It's reported on it, it's, it would be a court violation, so.
It's a court violation, but it's, it's a, it's a city ordinance.
Right, but.
You want to answer that? He'll answer it.
Thanks, Chair. So the, my understanding of the bill, I haven't read it thoroughly or the latest version of it. Uh, we have the ability to assess the property owner and the applicant for a building permit, which includes the engineer as well as the contractor, a fine for that, for that false statement. A fine, because it relates to this frustration that we cannot ask them to tear the house down, that, that goes too far. It'd probably be a taking by the government and then we gotta pay them for their house that we took down, made them take down. So, you know, I'm not a legal expert, so, but the fine, we can develop a fine process. The latest version that the director is leaning towards is a twenty-five thousand dollar initial fine and ten thousand dollars a day, which is in the neighborhood of the short-term rental violation. Which is, that's the ten thousand, that one is ten thousand dollar initial fine and ten thousand dollars a day. Depending what's the advertisement, we judge it for an advertisement or a use violation. That's of that magnitude.
But it's, it's a city law, it's gonna be enforced by the state's court?
Well, I mean, it would be enforced by us as the D P P, whether they challenge it in court, that's a.
So it gets a process, it's just created a fine, they can appeal, then they can go all the way up to the Supreme Court and because they don't get their, what do you call it, due process administrative hearing because the court rules.
I mean, and they can appeal the, the direction or the decision of the director.
Yeah, that's administrative.
And then follow on to the court.
And our, our, inside Bill fifty-four itself, it says, a person convicted of violating the provisions of this article is guilty of a misdemeanor, subject to the punishment by one or more of the following. A fine not exceeding two thousand dollars, imprisonment not to exceed one year, and community service not to exceed eighty hours.
But the city ordinance is not a misdemeanor, it's, misdemeanor is under state criminal law.
That's probably correct. The part we're playing is the administrative fine.
Right.
And what's, 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 we're stuck at is the maximum that we have capability of assessing is two thousand dollars.
That's right.
So which, which pales into comparison with what a building on the house is. So it's like, it's like, you know, the cost of doing business and they'll just take the fine and keep doing what they're doing. So we want it to be a deterrent.
That's curious when I ask the question, does this law have any teeth? Anyway, good luck, we'll see what happens when they stick their thumb up to you guys. Yes, Henry, back there.
For the public, if we think a house is a monster house or whatnot or are built, could be anything. What can the public do?
Yeah, please.
Um, thank you for that question. We encourage you to call our office and report any suspected illegal activity on monster homes or any other type of building permit violations. We, we receive many complaints, usually from neighbors, you know, because it's right next door, right? And, and, and even if we find that they do have a building permit, that's okay too. Right? So then the neighbor is, their question is answered, that there is a, is a legal permit for them to proceed with construction, so their neighbor is doing the proper thing. So you, if you have concerns about illegal construction, just call us and we'll send out inspectors. That's what our inspectors are for.
But I always have the impression that they all, they all skirt the system in regards to, oh, you can't find the owner. What was happening in Holla Drive, right? Can't find the owner, but they get the owner and they schedule appointments all around the system, removing refrigerators, tools or something that, I heard people do that.
Chair can.
Also, they, you know.
So there's.
There are things we can script.
So Holla Drive is, that's a use violation. So the building was already built and it was built without proper permit. The, the, the problem with the use violations is if the homeowner does not grant us access for our, allow our inspectors to inspect, then we have no recourse. They have to allow us on the property. However, when we have construction activities, then we have a little more leeway. And then you can actually see it from the road. And if, if, if we observe what's happening on the property, go back to our office and check, is there an active permit or not? What type of work is being done? Usually the contractors do allow us onsite so we can actually inspect. Because they know that that's what our inspector's jobs are. We had situations where houses and or major renovations are built without a permit and no one complains and we don't even know. That's why when you ask that question, how do we report? We encourage you to report it because that's a good check on us. We are a complaint-driven organization, we do not have people, enough people to go around searching, oh, construction. Let's look it, check it out. No, no, it's based on complaints. So we, just because we don't have enough manpower. So if you have a concern, please call us and we'll check it out and we'll get back to you.
Henry.
Yes. And it's confidential.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Careful that. Squeal on your neighbor. Oh, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, going right along, under, new, whole business, no right turn on School Street, I'll leave that on the agenda. Twenty thirty-seven on the agenda, red light, camera state, stats, stats? Camera state, status, stats, I think we had that already. Yeah, I gave it. I'm gonna cross that out. Thank you. New business, uh, items A and C have been taken care of. Item B lanes for restriping. I'll leave that on the agenda. Cars blocking bus on the Laleha, we'll wait for our city rep and. Pink curb on beginning of Amala through the first driveway, it was mine. I'm gonna, I'll save that for next month. Yes?
I may have missed this earlier. Um, I have a um, situation on my street, the corner. Um, where the street sign, um, it's the school street, the Atlanta street, it was on, you know, on the pole, on the ground. And it stayed there, and I was gonna do the three one one thing, didn't get around to, today it disappeared. It's not there.
So probably took it.
I'm sorry?
So we probably took it to recycle it.
Yeah, or something, yeah. So, we don't have a sign and it's a problem because that's the only sign that we have on.
What's in the section?
Right before, and people get confused, even with GPS and, I mean, they, you know, I, I have multiple people like, can't find your house. Yeah, and so without the sign, they won't be able to find anybody.
So, give that over to him, so he'll have it and we'll also take it to both of us.
Okay, yeah. I was impressed that it stayed there.
Do you need to put this on the agenda or I'll just leave it up to Brandon? How were you on your, to the?
Missing street sign, missing street sign.
Missing. Kula, yeah, what? Missing street sign?
There's a news, uh, fire item.
Okay, uh, ours, that's, that's all I have on our new business. There's nothing else. Community associations. All of you know. Alyssa, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, you're welcome. No, thank you. Um, just wanted to report that, you know, I know there's been this question about the Maui relief and so we've received numerous calls about if we're gonna be providing um, like a donation location and we are at Saint Francis, so we'll be launching that. We working, uh, we've gotten a container or in the process of getting a container to ship and I've been on um, daily calls since last week with the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. With various um, like FEMA or just emergency management services, just to look at needs and then also one of the biggest issues has been housing, of course, so we're looking at that as a potential. Here on Oahu, for those that have been displaced, but um, we are doing our Maui relief efforts. We will be accepting donations. Um, I'll send you folks a flyer just so you folks have it. Almost, we doing it through August thirty first, so kind of like the second wave as there's been a lot of chaos currently on Maui for various um, activities in regards to distribution. But I know that they're getting things together. So we are in collaboration with the City and County of Honolulu, the Elderly Affairs Division, working on this particular um, collection of donation events. So, just wanted you folks to be aware of that. Um, in addition, um, on this Friday, August eighteenth, we are having a Saint Francis caregiver education and wellness program and craft fair. Um, so we'll be having people with, you know, like, providing produce um, or having produce available as well as educational resources for various things. So, just wanted you folks to be aware and that again is on August eighteenth on the Saint Francis campus and the courtyard from one to five P M. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, yes.
Well, Alyssa, can we have your phone number and email, please?
Sure. So my cell phone number, I'll give you my cell phone number. It's um, eight zero eight two nine one one four three three. And then my email address is M A H H O M A U G A at Saint S T. Francis F R A N C I S Hawaii H A W A I I dot org.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from Alyssa? None? How about from the public? Okay. Lana Kila.
So as of the, things are going well at Lana Kila, there's lots going on. They turned in their final reports to the City and County and the State for the contracts and they met all of their goals and actually exceeded all of their goals. They currently have seven hundred volunteers working at the center.
Wait, you have seven hundred volunteers? What do they volunteer for?
It's just anything, teach a class, clean a, clean a room. Uh, yeah. And uh, they're, they're starting up their accreditation evaluation again. They reported that the renovation money has not yet been released by Dags for renovating the center. And as an example, for an exercise class, they have sixty one people in one exercise class. So it's really, they're really doing a lot and um, things are going really well. They had just had the, uh, their show and sell on August tenth, so sorry, it's a little late to let you all know about it, but. There'll be another one coming up. Let you know, hopefully it's not going to.
Very good. I can perform. Very good.
Yeah, so, oh, go ahead.
So, do most of the people who come to the classes and activities and the volunteers here, there's not that big a park, do they come by public transportation?
And then Catholic Charities also has um, transportation and handy vans. But there is, there is some parking. Yeah, they park on the big basketball courts in the back and along the street. Yeah.
Yeah, so continuing off of a chorus question, we were able to attend the Lana Kila Volker procedure center show and sell. It was very well attended. There was a lot of food that was there, lots of people buying things, lots of plants for sale, a lot of money. And um, you know, the handy vans were there, picking, picking seniors up, very seamlessly, they've been exactly where to wait in and out. The um, handicap stalls are always being utilized and the entire back parking lot was filled and the back gate was open, so seniors were able to come, come all back and forth through. But it was a very good event and we can't wait to the next show and sell.
Very good. Any questions, comments? How about from the public? Okay, um, let's see. Any other, oh, friends of Laleha?
So I did ask Sarah Shonopin when the grand opening for the Laleha Library would be, but she hasn't responded yet, so she must be very busy. And so I'll, I would assume probably shoot for the end of the year, but again, it takes a lot of coordination and I know she's very busy with um, with her activities at Lana Kila Volker Center, but as soon as we know anything, I'll let you know.
Yep. Questions? Other nonprofit organizations? None? Okay, uh, announcement Monday. Uh, September eleventh. Will be at My Mind, correct? Don't come here. All right. Anybody? Any, anybody have asked announcements? If none, I entertain a motion to adjourn by Brandon.
Second.
Second. One in favor? Any opposed? No objections? Have a good evening, everybody. Thanks for the handle. Congratulations on our newest member. Oldest and newest member.